All the meeting to order is seven oh one. Rise for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Hages?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I am here. I will move now for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I think that motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Discussion of chambers? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Move down to citizen council.
May I use this one? Okay. So I'm Representative Albert from eighty-six district. One of my goals was to come to all the local units twice a year, basically just keep touch base, basically. So just a quick update for what's going on in Lansing. This past week we had the auto no-fault vote, so that was a reform that failed. I did vote yes on the reform. It's a very complicated issue. Anyone wants to talk more in depth, I'd be happy to talk about it in office hours, but if I could sum it up very briefly, I would say we have the highest auto insurance in the nation here in Michigan, but the counter to that is we also have the best benefit. So it's trying to find a balance because there's a lot of Michiganders that can't actually afford the insurance that we have. So I think the fight's going to continue. This issue's been going on for decades in Michigan, and I don't think it's going away anytime soon. A couple of bills I have in Lansing. So I have a veterans compensation bill that passed through the House this last week. Basically just says, if the state of Michigan hires somebody, they have to look at their military experience when they come up with their compensation. This is something I know that the state didn't look at when they hired me, so something that we can approve on. I also have a student debt bill that passed through Education Committee this past week. There's 1.4 trillion dollars estimated in student loans for college, so this bill simply would have the universities disclose to students once a year basically how much debt they have. The most important thing in there says, how much is it going to cost you on a monthly basis after you graduate? Several other states have done this, and a good example is Indiana did this, and Indiana University saw a 23 percent drop in student borrowing for federal loans as a result of that. So I'm hopeful that that passes through the House soon, and then on to the Senate, and then to the governor, hopefully. So probably the largest thing I'll work on this year is, and it will affect pretty much every local unit in Michigan, is pension and retiree healthcare reform. I've been working on it a lot. You know, I came and spoke to Mike earlier this year about it. It's a massive issue. If you look statewide, there's 10 billion unfunded in retiree healthcare at the local level, and 10 billion that are funded in pensions. Pensions are about 73 percent funded statewide, and the retiree healthcare is about 30 percent funded. So there's a ton of variability. You have some that are well off and some that are in a lot of trouble. So we're trying to find a way to identify those that are at risk and help put them out of that facility. So that being said, that's all I have for my updates. I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Reagan, lifelong resident of Lowell. And I'd like to introduce, not introduce, but remind the residents of Lowell, there's a public hearing on November twentieth about medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Lowell. I'd like to have everyone that has an input on that to come to the meeting. I think it's at five thirty. This marijuana medicine. The debate surrounding marijuana as medicine is riddled with half-truths, anecdotes, and empty promises. It is also one of the most poorly-written initiatives for businesses in the country since it would not allow employees to enforce drug-free workplace laws. It is the conclusion of almost every review of the science that smoked crude marijuana is not medicine, even though it is, in its isolated components, have shown promise medically. For example, modern scientists have synthesized marijuana plant's primary psychoactive drug, but it is not an effective way to get it by smoking it. When most people think of medical marijuana these days, they don't think of a pill with an isolated component of marijuana, but rather the smoked vaporized edible version of the whole marijuana plant. The same can be said about opium. You can smoke opium, but they synthesize morphine from that. They have synthesized morphine in medically proper doses. That has gone through the Institute of the Federal Drug Administration, very careful scrutiny. They know that what that dosage is. It is not a proper delivery method to smoke it, and there's not a reliable dose. While parts of the marijuana plants have medical value, the Institute of Medicine in its landmark report says therapeutic values of cannabis drugs, smoked marijuana, is a crude delivery system. Similarly, derivatives of marijuana are already passing through rigorous FDA approval processes, and they may be available soon. The FDA process for approving medicine remains the only scientific and legally-recognized procedure for bringing safe and effective medications to the American public. To date, the FDA has not found smoked marijuana to be either safe or effective medicine for any condition. The medicine community has not located, the people that did the law for the state of Michigan have 15 possible uses for it. The American Medical Association calls for more research on the subject that indicates that such a call should not be viewed as an endorsement of state-based medical cannabis programs, the legalization of marijuana, or the scientific evidence on the therapeutic use of cannabis. John Knight of the Center for Disease, Center for Adolescent Substance Abuse Research at Cheltenham Hospital says marijuana has gotten a free ride of sorts among the general public who view it as non-addictive and less important than other drugs. However, medical science tells a different story. American Cancer Society does not advocate the use of inhaled marijuana or the legalization of marijuana. American Glaucoma Foundation does not endorse medical marijuana as a treatment for glaucoma. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society, although it is clear that canniboids have potential for both the management of MS symptoms such as pain and constancy, as well as for neural protection, the society cannot at this time recommend that medical marijuana will be made widely available to people with MS for symptom management. The decision not only is based on existing legal barriers to its use, but even more importantly, studies to date do not demonstrate a clear benefit compared to existing treatments. The average user of the medical marijuana is a 32-year-old white male with a history of alcohol and substance abuse and no history of life-threatening illnesses. Please be informed, make a proper decision. I'd like to invite the public to go to SAM. I've been having ads in the buyer's guide that has the website. It's a scientifically-based information that's research-based. I will read one quote from National Organization for the Reformation of Marijuana Laws. "We are trying to get marijuana classified medically. If we do that, we'll be using the issue as a red hearing to give marijuana a good name. Please make an informed decision. Go to the website, learnaboutSAM.com." And thank you for counsel for serving, and Jim Hodges for your 23 years of service.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Anna Baker. I would just like to take a minute to thank the council for approaching the topic of medical marijuana with open mind and open ears. I was truly blown away by the amount of personal time that you guys have put into learning about this topic, and I'm looking very much forward to the public hearing this coming or at the end of this month. I would also like to thank Jim Hodges for his service and wish him well in his future endeavors. Every time I had the pleasure of speaking with you, you were very helpful, knowledgeable, and very welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, old business is empty. Move to new business. I may first retire a cola for two thousand.
Good evening. Every year since 1990, with the exception of 2010, the Lowell Light and Power Board has approved a cost-of-living adjustment for Lowell Light and Power retirees, and at the October board meeting for Lowell Light and Power, the board approved pending council approval a 2.50 percent cost-of-living increase for Lowell Light and Power retirees. The cost to do this is $78,129. The cost-of-living adjustment will not impact the funding levels of either Lowell Light and Power or the city, and the entire cost is paid for by Lowell Light and Power. And this is really more of a formality. The Lowell Light and Power plan falls within the city's overall plan. So the recommendation is to approve the 2.50 percent cost-of-living increase for Lowell Light and Power retirees.
I'd make a motion that the city council approve a 2.50 percent cost-of-living adjustment for Lowell Light and Power retirees at a cost of $78,129.
I'll second.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
I'd be asset management data collection agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've mentioned previously my involvement in the Twenty-First Century Asset Management pilot project being conducted in both West Michigan and Southeastern Michigan. During this project, we were working on developing a statewide asset management site to address infrastructure needs for all communities in Michigan. As part of this pilot, the city of Lowell and the village of Sparta have been asked to provide data that we have through Regis, our countywide GIS system currently, to the state of Michigan for part of a pilot to develop a possible statewide system. Currently, we're the only two communities in West Michigan who are being tasked with a pilot. Attached near Pakistan was an agreement that we would, that's been recommended to sign. This is of no cost to the city of Lowell to participate. We currently pledge dues as members of the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council and Regis. I recommend for the city council to approve the asset management data collection agreement as presented, and direct myself to sign the necessary documents.
Thank you.
So moved.
Councilboard? Any discussion or questions? Sue?
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Okay, well, boards and commissions, boards, Mr. Canfield?
Nothing for me.
Mr. James?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes, we have a lot going on in the historic district commission. They got their grant, and they're busy still spending money and hoping I'll go down some of the things and give you an update. Permit applications for 218 East Main door replacement, 216 East Main window replacement, 312 East Main window replacement, and some project updates. 198 212 West Main, I believe they're doing painting and stuff, 301 West Main is Larkins, 217 West Main Marty, 219 West Main Carolyn Price, 215 Ability Weavers, and 106 Main's Rookies. So they got a lot going on, and they're still trying to help out, and I know Greg, you've got some others in there replacing some windows and stuff. So they do a lot of great things, and the next meeting will be November 28th at six o'clock downstairs.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. No boards or commissions as meetings, but last Friday I had the privilege and honor to attend a ceremony at the Bean Observatory on Kissing Rock. I happened to sit on the LCTV Endowment Board as well as Look Committee. LCTV granted a request for $25,000 to the Bean Observatory, and Look contributed $4,000 to the Bean Observatory. And that was for the purpose of purchasing land so that they could make sure that their activities out there as one of the great nonprofits of our community continues safe and sound, as they now own the land as opposed to renting it from Jim and Ellie? Debbie, yes, thank you. And the marons have been very gracious in allowing the observatory to be there, but alas, it's good that I'll have all the legal work worked out. And so it was a terrific ceremony, and it was my privilege, as they say, to represent these two groups, as well as the city at that signing ceremony.
Thank you. My only board-related comment is that the ninth, so the DDA meeting is going to cancel. Mr. Brown, Senator, any tips or board?
Tomorrow is election day. For those running, I wish you all luck, and looking forward to working with whoever wins. Just a reminder, though, for those who are elected to council, we will have a special meeting next Monday night at 6:00 PM to meet the council members per the charter requirement. We will also, after that, we will have training for the council for your new laptops. Your new iPads are over here, and we're going to provide, Betsy from Midoriyo is going to provide you with a short training seminar. November 20th, just a reminder, the special meeting, oh, sorry, the committee, the whole meeting at 5:30 where we will have a public hearing on the medical marijuana. We will, if the public hearing continues after seven o'clock, we will place it as an agenda item on the council so we can continue that discussion if needed. In front of the council, there's a memo for all of you regarding Street Sweeper. It was requested for administration to bring back information about researching the purchase of a street sweeper. If you read the review, if you read the memo from Rich LaBombar, it's pretty apparent that that's really not a cost-effective way for us to be doing, to do that. It's much more cost-effective to continue our practice of contracting for that service. Over the past couple of weeks, myself, Rich, and Dave Austin from Williams and Works, we sat down to review the downtown master plan. The downtown plan was worked on, was being worked on by my predecessor, and it stopped, that process stopped before, once the situation with the city manager changed, and it's something that the city council and the DDA have yet to really approve. So we sat down with Williams and Works and went over it at length last week, and we suggest that we probably will have a public meeting on it sometime in January to listen to the public and their concerns, ideas they have for downtown, and try and get that plan moving. And then also, we would also need to update the tax increment finance plan for the DDA. I was directed this past summer to come back to the council at some point with different revenue options to consider for our infrastructure needs. I've been working on this quite a bit over the last month, and I've been doing a number of different analyses, and currently, like I said, I think I said in my memo, I've created 23 Excel spreadsheets on different options, and I will be presenting these options to the council sometime in January to look at. Road asset management plan. As part of the Saw Grant, we want to tie in a road asset management plan to the Saw Grant to try and start developing a plan going forward. Currently do not have that in place, and we were going to try and do that internally. We're going to ask Williams and Works to submit a proposal for us to take care of that for us. There's been an issue that popped up last couple of days regarding Main Street, the crosswalk over by the showboat. Had an incident a couple of weeks, week or two ago, where there was an accident where the person stopped at the crosswalk and was rear-ended. Well, technically, under state law, that person who stopped to yield for the pedestrian is the at-fault driver in that accident because under section 612 of the Motor Vehicle Code, we can, the only pedestrian, we are only, vehicles only yield to pedestrians at signalized intersections, as per state law. There was a post on the Facebook page for the police department explaining that to the resident, and it's had quite a bit of debate. We've been contacted by Channel Eight about this, and I will be speaking to them tomorrow, so there will be a story on it. Also recently, we just removed the four-way stop at Amity and Elm. To my knowledge, there really hasn't been any issues by doing that. Out front, when you came in tonight, there's a new pot machine. The pot machine was free, we received it from the federal government, and what we are going to do with that pot machine is the proceeds for that will be donated toward the police department's winter coat program for kids. So all proceeds for that pot machine going forward will be dedicated for that. And lastly, this is Councilman Hodges' last meeting. I've known Jim now for, since July of 2016, so we're now about four, 16 months, something like that, danger. It's been an absolute pleasure getting to know Jim, working with Jim. The institutional knowledge he has has been very helpful to me. He's been very, if I have a question on something, if I need something, I call Jim. And I, just because you're not going to be on council doesn't mean I'm not going to call you anymore. I know where you live. But it's been truly a pleasure, Jim. I'm really looking forward, I mean, I'm going to miss you on council, but I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
All right, also, all right, we're going to go to appointments. I have a ton of appointments and a ton of people who haven't called me back, so I thought we would start with at least the ones, people who are already here and current council positions. Michael Interested Still in the Building Authority?
You're on my apartments list, yeah.
I think.
I guess.
Jeffrey, the Historic Commission?
Yes.
Any objections to that one? Marty Light and Power?
Yes.
And Marty Planning Commission?
Yes.
Now, we need to fill the ones, unless you've changed your mind?
No.
All right. Arbor Board, they meet again on the 13th, I believe that's a noon meeting, correct?
I know.
I can attend that and serve in his capacity if there's no objections to that. I know a lot of you have day jobs.
Yeah, I can't make it.
Good?
Good.
Chamber of Commerce doesn't meet again before our next meeting, so. You're on that as well, aren't you?
No.
Oh, it's on my little list here. LCTV Endowment Fund. That one, I think you can wait if we need to, until after the election, because they don't meet again before our next meeting. Everybody good with that? And then the Fire Authority, they meet again on the 13th. That's also an afternoon meeting.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint you. We're looking forward to that. I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? We need a vote for? We don't need a vote for that one. That's also an afternoon meeting, so I can attend that one as well. And I think that's it. Dennis, are you still here? How about Endowment, LCTV Endowment?
I think I'm still on it, probably over the year.
Yeah, yep. I guess we'll wait for the rest. Harry's not here, is he? No. All right, we'll wait for the rest of these people to call me back. Everybody good with that? Still no more applications for the Planning Commission, so that'd be a good one. If anybody wants to get involved to put their application in for, that's all I have for appointments. We'll do council comments, Greg.
Something that I think we should do is, the city should look at contracts that we have for services, and I don't think we've looked at these in a long time. We continue to use the same people, and I think it's just good business policy to look at this, you know, every five years or so, and I don't think we've done it in a long length of time, so. I know we have certain contracts that are recently renewed, but I think we should just, to be prudent, look at what we're paying for services and look at that and get some proposals from other interested parties for that. Jim Hodges?
Yes, sir.
You're leaving some big shoes for us to fill here. There's been some ups and downs in the 23 years that you've served. You did a great job of running meetings and really handled things well, and it's a lot tougher. Things are pretty smooth right now for us, but you went through some rough waters and did a great job representing the city, and thank you for that, and enjoy your retirement. It's been great working with you, and if we can be half the council persons that you have been, we'll be doing very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Chambers?
First off, Jim, enjoy retirement. Enjoy pulling the trailer and seeing the world. Second, thanks for the Coffee with Counsel book. I went through it, was reading it, and I think if I ever have to give up my seat, I think the next person will just keep handing that book down. That's some pretty big shoes to fill here, to show me how to make the coffee, how to get in the building, how to lock it up. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Jeffrey?
First, I'd like to thank staff and all departments for their hard work and dedication. And Jim, yeah, you've been solid. First of all, Jim has helped me in so many accidents from listening. He's always been there. Every time I call, even want to talk to him, he never said, he never said no, and he's always been a rock, never judging. And I think of everything that I've learned from Jim, the thing that I'm going to take away the most is, I'm proud to call him a friend, and that's what he's gone through this entire process, is a great man, a friend, and I look forward to leaning on you more. And the 23 years of service you gave to this community are amazing, and you're quite the man, and I appreciate everything you did, and your love for this community truly goes through and has shown, so thank you for everything, and I got another friend, and I appreciate you.
My turn. It's going to be pretty difficult. I don't want you to go. I've been telling you that for almost a year now. I appreciate everything that you brought to this table, and this ship is only upright because you got us through it. There were some tough times a couple of years ago, and I just, I don't know where we would be without you. I don't know where I would be, even though you would try every day when I sit down here to be more like you. And nobody's going to make you retire if you want to change your mind.
Maybe?
That's Jim Hodges. He pretended to think about it to make me feel better. So I do have a couple of things for you, though. They're on your ear. Want to go up? You can have it. Considering your exit interview. Go right up here.
Oh, all the way up top.
It's hard to figure out what to give somebody who's worked so hard for 23 years, but this is from your brother.
Thank you. We were working an estate sale for a dear friend, and his mother had done an artwork of City Hall, and I said something that could be kind of cool. She's always so damn quiet, anyway. Just let it go. Thank you.
This is from all of us here.
Microphone, please.
Microphone, please.
Well, thank you, and Al, it's just as well that you didn't get that first part, but I was thanking my wife, but we'll leave it as personal, just between me and my best friend. but I was thanking my wife, but, uh, we'll leave it as personal, just between me and my best friends here. Says, maybe you?
Sure. Public Service Award of Excellence presented to Jim Hodges in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to the city of Lowell. City Council, January nineteen eighty-nine, December nineteen ninety-seven. Then again, January two thousand and fourth to November sixth of two thousand and seventeen.
Today?
I know. I'm working on getting through this. Mayor Broton, two thousand and eight, and the best mayor, two thousand and nine through two thousand and fifteen. Seven years. Put this down. Got him another name, boy, too. He forgets.
Guess I forget who I am. Thank you very much.
Chris, I get some final comments? Steve's right there, nobody's going to steal it. It's all yours. Oh, yeah. I've got some notes on that.
Thank you, everyone. Twenty-three years, it was broken, as, and again, it was broken up into two stints. I know it's hard to believe, but I did lose the election in ninety-seven to, uh, a guy named Mike Blau. And Mike went on to serve as mayor, a good guy, did Coach T well together. And, uh, we're still pretty good friends. It's, it's been an interesting time and there's nothing better than public service. So, uh, it takes over sixty people involved in various boards and commissions to help the city be what it is. And, you know, our friends down the road here in Ada, they're attempting to be a wall. They're spending millions and millions of dollars to be what we already are. And, uh, that is a tribute to a lot of good people, uh, not just those here, but all those that serve on the boards and commissions, but together in harmony, making things happen. And that's what it takes. And, uh, I'd like to name a few names, but then you start forgetting some people and you leave somebody out and you end up hurting somebody and, uh, so. But I'm smart enough to recognize Chris. And, uh, she's been, uh, very helpful, a good-sounding board, lets, lets me vent. And, uh, she knows more about you guys and, and everything else. My real thoughts at the moment, and then it matures and gets a little better. But, uh, Chris has been terrific, very supportive through the whole thing. And it does take, uh, somebody else to help, help you through, uh, doing your best jobs and as, as, as you might through, through life. Also, the three city managers I've had the privilege of working with. Mike, you got a lot of promise and I trust everything's going to go terrific for you. I'd like to see you retired from this job too, when the day comes. And Mark Howard, it was a pleasure to have worked with, with him and, uh, we, uh, we did some, some good things, things together, uh, as I was mayor during his time and was, uh, party to bringing him to Lowell as, uh, our city manager. But Dave passed well. Dave was, uh, and is, continues to be a terrific man, uh, that gives to our community. Uh, he thought he had retired and then, uh, he came back to help us out. That says a lot about the man and, uh, all that he cares about in our, our, our community. Again, you know, not, not the most outgoing man, rather, rather ho-hum. But in that ho-hum, uh, there's a whole lot of success and a whole lot of work, a whole lot of quiet activity going on and some are done, things get done. And the community really, this city really works because of the city clerk. And, uh, Patty Horlock, as well as Sue, really make this place work and work so well. Thank you. And just for the fun of it, uh, I've, I've served, uh, this, this time with, uh, several city council members over these years. And, uh, I would just close in naming those people I've had the privilege of, of working with. And, uh, they are Jim Motman, Bill Thompson, Jack Tonger, and Charlie Doyle. Those are the ones I joined back in nineteen eighty-nine. And then subsequently, uh, we had Don Green and my dear, great friend, Gene Shores, Chuck Myers, Al Matthews, Jim Fowler, Sharon Ellison, Jeff Altough, Mary-Lene Leponzi, Andrew Schrawbin, Jim Hall, Jim Valentine, Chris Schwab, Matt Mayer, Alan Teelander, Jeff Phillips, Greg Handfield, Marty Chambers, and Mayor Mike DeVore. I must say that I enjoyed working with each and every one of these people, some more than others. But, uh, it's all these folks that help make your community what it is, not just one person. But I thank you for the time and what you've given to me tonight. And, uh, I leave you and, uh, I'll let you know that in my humble opinion, this city is in good hands. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
I would move that we adjourn at seven-thirty-seven.
I'll support it. All those in favor? Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.